Our allegiance to the letter of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're live. I'd like to call the city council meeting to order. Nina, would you please do the roll call?
Councilperson Alvarez?
Here.
Councilperson Pidgorsky?
Here.
Councilperson Geishurst?
Here.
Councilperson Clem? I think he's having difficulty joining. Councilperson Williams? Councilperson Gully?
Here.
Councilperson Zilly?
Here.
We have the approval of minutes from the December 1st meeting.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, Nina, please call the roll.
Councilperson Alvarez?
Yes.
Councilperson Pidgorsky?
Yes.
Councilperson Geishurst?
Yes.
Councilperson Williams?
Yes.
Councilperson Gully?
Yes.
Councilperson Zilly?
Yeah.
We have communications correspondence and announcements from the mayor. I do not have any at this time. We will move on with our appointments, the election of council president and vice president. Someone is screeching on their microphone.
It's me, Mayor. I don't know what's causing it. I don't mean that I can't. You'll just have to, I don't know. We haven't been able to figure it out. I would like to nominate Colin Zilly to serve as president for the calendar year 2021.
A second.
And I'd like to nominate Scott Williams for vice president for 2021.
Wait now. I think we have to offer other council members the opportunity to make a motion if they wish to for president. So are there any other nominations for the office of president? Hearing none. The nominations for president are closed. You may take your vote now. Nina, would you call the roll?
Councilperson Alvarez?
Yes.
Councilperson Pidgorsky?
Yes.
Councilperson Geishurst?
Yes.
Councilperson Williams?
Yeah.
Councilperson Gully?
Yes.
Councilperson Zilly?
Yes.
We need a motion for the position of vice president of the council.
I'll make a motion for Scott Williams to be vice president for 2021.
Do we have a second? Did you get that, Nina?
Yeah.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any other nominations for the position of vice president to the city council? Hearing none. Nina, please call the roll.
Councilperson Alvarez?
Yes.
Councilperson Pidgorsky?
Yes.
Councilperson Geishurst?
Yes.
Councilperson Williams? Councilperson Gully?
Yes.
Councilperson Zilly?
Yes.
Congratulations, Councilperson Zilly as the new president and Scott Williams as our vice. We now have the mayor may oral appointments. I really don't have any changes other than one. If you would like me to read all the appointments, I'd be happy to do so. What are the?
Mayor, just for the public to hear it, to read them all if you haven't.
I agree.
Okay, so the May oral appointments for the 2021 boards and commissions, advisory claims committee, Brian Gully, Dan Comenda, and Lori Wilkie. Alcoholic Beverage Commission, James Thompson. Americans with Disabilities Act building and grounds coordinator, Sandy Cole. Board of Licensing and Registration, Robert Makowiek, Pat Newell, Joe Casper, and Ramon Mendoza. Board of Public Works and Safety, Dr. Shawna Finley, Jamie Lewis, Steve Sonady, and Scott Williams. Board of Zoning Appeals, Frank Barkus and Stephen Summers. Economic Development Commission, Laura Gaffney. Hearing Authority for Enforcement of Building Standards, Attorney Alan Mendel. Park Board, Debbie Lee and Paul Sheselski. Plan Commission, David Adams and Tom Cherry. Porter County Convention, Recreation, and Visitor Commission, Barb Lusko and Karen Webster. Porter County Solid Waste Citizens Advisory Board, Julie Fowler. Redevelopment Authority, Colin Zilly. Redevelopment Commission, Ralph Munt and Greg Locke. Stormwater Board, Dominic Bonta and Patrick Newell. Those are the May oral appointments for 2021.
Nina, I see Pat just joined the meeting. Can we have it to where he can talk? Okay, Pat, we should be able to hear you now.
Hello, everyone. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
New Year, Pat.
Okay, we have the common council appointments for 2021.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So I'll start with the council committees. So the budget committee for 2021 will be councilperson Pidgorsky chairing that committee with councilperson Williams and councilperson Gully as members. The ordinance committee, councilperson Williams will chair the committee with councilperson Clem and councilperson Pidgorsky as members. The strategic planning committee, councilperson Geishurst will chair the committee with myself and councilperson Alvarez as members. The Ways and Means Committee, councilperson Alvarez will chair that committee with councilperson Clem and councilperson Geishurst as members. And then we do need to form a redistricting committee. Since the census was this year, we'll need to study our council district maps for future years. So councilperson Gully will chair that committee with councilperson Williams and councilperson Alvarez as members. Liaison members, councilperson Williams will be the liaison to the fire department and the fire merit board. Councilperson Geishurst will be the liaison to the park board. Councilwoman Pidgorsky will be the liaison to the police department and the police merit board. Councilperson Alvarez will be the liaison to the port authority. Councilperson Clem will be the liaison to the street sanitation department. And councilperson Gully will be the liaison for utilities. For the redevelopment commission will be myself and Alan Ekdahl. The traffic commission will be councilperson Pidgorsky. Board of Licensing will be councilperson Alvarez and the solid waste board will be councilperson Alvarez as well. And those are our appointments for 2021.
You will need a motion by your council to approve these appointments, Mr. President.
I want a motion to approve the council appointments for 2021.
A second.
Second, okay.
We have a motion and a second. Nina, would you please call the roll? Nina, you are muted.
I forgot, my dogs were barking. Councilperson Alvarez?
Yes.
Councilperson Pidgorsky?
Yes.
Councilperson Geishurst?
Yes.
Councilperson Clem?
Yeah.
Councilperson Williams? Councilperson Gully?
Yes.
Councilperson Zilly?
Yes.
Thank you. We have the clerk treasurers report, Nina.
Okay, so I had said I would give you guys a update on the TO bond. We closed on that December 10th. We were able to recapture $1,665,865.20 to the general fund, $345,912.18 to MBH, and $76,933.06 to the park fund. And those were per capital purchases going back to 2017 to date for purchases that could have been made by issuing a bond. We received our 1782 notice. We had to cut $262,426 from the general fund. We had to cut $1,255,746 from MBH and $94,158 from the park. We also got our fall distribution for property taxes and we had stated in email previously, but for the record, we received 98.67% of our collection. No, it's only up right now.
Are there any questions by the council to the clerk treasurer? If not, we will have reports from the city officials. Are there any city officials online that would like to give a report?
Mayor, I'm on. Chief Candy, I know here. You'd like me to give you a recap?
We absolutely would.
Okay. I don't think you guys can see me, but you can all hear me? Okay.
Yes, Mike.
Okay, I sent you guys basically a list of kind of what I'm going to go over. I got it out to you a little bit late, so it should be in your email within the last half hour or so. But anyway, calls for service for December, we had 2,516 total incidents. Comes out to about 81 a day. Obviously, the end of the year, so I was able to come up with our total incidents for the year, and that was 32,210 for the year of 2020, which broke out to about 88.2 a day. You know, there was a period where everything was shut down and we slowed down a little bit, but then I think we made up for it once everything opened back up. So in comparison to other years, it seems pretty much in line with the other years. So I don't have our crime stats or anything like that yet. Those will be tabulated soon and I'll get those out to you guys between now and the next meeting, so we can go over those at that point. So something else I sent to you all was kind of a COVID update, just kind of keeping track of how many we've had out, how many shifts we've lost, certain things like that. You know, I'd like to take the opportunity to say, I know everyone, city employees and citizens have been affected by this thing for this year. But you know, I want to commend my people, our officers, our staff here. I was just looking at the numbers again, 32,210 incidents for a year, and you know, we've been able to keep this thing going with minimal officers off and you know, minimal overtime shifts to fill that. So lots of things we had to change with protocol and you know, just kind of relearning the way we do our jobs. And you know, tough sledding there for a while, but they've done an awesome job. So I just, I just really want to say how much I appreciate the job that they've done with that. Some staffing, I sent you guys some stuff. We currently have three officers that are beginning, beginning the Northwest Indiana Law Enforcement Academy next week. Got one officer in field training right now. We've had a couple of recent retirements. We've got a pending retirement that's coming. I've got an officer out on an extended MI with a serious illness and an officer, another officer who may be leaving soon. So we're kind of in a bit of a transition period now where we've got, you know, we got ones leaving and we don't have all the spots filled, but luckily it's the beginning of the year and not too many people are taking vacation right now, so we should be good for a while. But I sent you a little bit more of a detailed list with that. And then lastly, just wanted to recognize a couple of people here. Mid-December, we had a retirement after 32 years of service. Lieutenant Mike Vaughn retired. Among many things that he did here, he was a patrol supervisor, captain of the patrol division, and most recently, upon his retirement, he was one of our detectives. So congratulate him on his 32 years, wish him best of luck in the next stage of his life. And then based on his retirement, that opened up some promotions. Obviously, the, as a lieutenant spot goes, that creates another lieutenant spot to fill that and then it kind of, you know, the chain works down as everybody moves up. So upon his retirement, we promoted Lieutenant Crafton, Sergeant Wazilowski, and Corporal Peel. And then we had another retirement yesterday. After 33 years of service, Lieutenant Jolly has retired. Among some of the things that he did, patrol supervisor and longtime assistant chief under several city administrations. And most recently, he is retiring as a lieutenant in the patrol division. So as a result of his retirement, again, that opened up some, for some people to move up. We've promoted Lieutenant Coleman, Sergeant Getz, and Corporal Lightfoot to fill the spots that opened up when he left. And then very lastly, we recently had 18 officers that were honored by the Substance Abuse Council and presented with the Phoenix Award for life-saving. That would be life-saving through the use of Narcan. You know, sad to the fact that there were 18 times that our officers had to use that, but happy that there was 18 lives that were saved by the use of the Narcan and by the actions of our officers. And then lastly, I keep saying lastly, this is actually the last one. We had three officers that were recognized by the drunk driving task force for their activity regarding drunk driving enforcement. And that was Officer Dowd, Officer Price, and Officer Overton. So you know, 2020 was a strange year for everybody, but you know, all in all, I think, I think there were still some good things that happened here. So that's actually it. Any questions?
Excellent job, chief.
Alrighty.
Great job. We're proud of all of you guys and the hard work you put in this year. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much. And stay safe.
I see that Superintendent Reader is on the line.
Yes, Madam Mayor. Can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
Oh, all right, great. I sent you an earlier email to the city council, various members, but just to give you a little breakdown of what I sent. We had back in December here, 782 phone calls, 237 drive-ins to the property or to the department and no walk-ins, 191 voice messages. We processed 283 emails and 88 bulk item charges. To the street, we had a very successful leaf collection. We worked about 40 of those days back then in November, started in October. We did about 400 in two loads. So that was, that was amazing for the guys that did that through this whole COVID thing and everything. We had five winter events that department worked through. About 450 tons were of salt was laid on the roads. With that said, we did reserve through the state bid about 4,000 tons. Last year, we paid $77.72 a ton. And this year, because of the state bid and just better pricing, we went down to $72.19 a ton. So that's very good news there. For the sanitation report, the N report, we collected nearly almost 18,000 tons throughout the city when it came to trash, debris, and recycling. We finished out the year about 19% diversion rate. Our landfill did go up. We're looking at probably about a 15% increase. Our city is growing and new homes are popping up. People are, you know, during this year was very unique with the COVID. A lot of people were home cleaning stuff out, getting rid of a lot of things, asking for that extra black lid toter. So we did see a trend in expenses there, approximately about $890,000 for landfill. So next month, I'll have a more detailed report about more end of the number, or end of the year numbers. Some of those things I'm still researching and getting together. So that's about it for my report for street and sanitation. I just want to thank the guys, the employees, the men and women down there. We really worked hard this year with the COVID and everything. So they did a tremendous job. So any questions?
No, I want to thank you, Randy, because I know one time you had a huge number of your employees off due to COVID and being quarantined. And it was, it was very stressful for a couple of weeks for you, but you guys did a great job. And no one did not get the garbage picked up or their leaves. It was, it was a great job by your, your team. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Are there any other questions for Superintendent Reader? If not, are there any other department heads on the line? If not, I think that Attorney.
Can you hear me, Mayor?
Oh, hi. Hi, Chief Wokening. Yes.
Yeah, I was, I was trying to get through. I couldn't get it off mute, so. Everybody hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, well, this is my, my first official report. So as you know, Chief Sosby retired, so I have taken over for him. And he left me in a pretty good department. We're in pretty good shape. Last month in December, we did, we did have 489 total calls with 379 of them being ambulance calls. And with that being said, we ended the year with 5,163 total calls. And that is 600 more calls than we've ever had before. So this is the busiest year we've ever had. 3,852 were ambulance calls and we had 94 actual fires. So it was quite the busy year for us. Christmas morning, we did have a house fire that resulted in a fatality. We did have the state fire marshal come out and our investigators and investigated it. So the one thing we did find, and I'd like to make sure people understand is there were no working smoke detectors and it could have been a much better outcome with working smoke detectors. So just a reminder to everybody, make sure your smoke detectors, you have them and are working. If you don't have them, we keep them at all of our fire stations and we give them away at no charge. So if you need a smoke detector, please come by the fire station or call and we can hook you up with one. We, we are in the process of our firefighters registering and getting their COVID vaccines, so that's been going very well. Also, the county health department did give us doses of the flu shot. So we have been, we have been administering the flu shot because they're letting us do it ourselves. So we have reached out to all the city departments and we've offered that to them. So if any of the city departments have members that need it, just give us a call and we do it right in our office. We, we have also, even though the pandemic has kind of hampered. We, we've also, even though the pandemic has kind of hampered us, we did, we still have, did a lot of training this year. We did about ninety-two-hundred-and-seventy total hours or about a hundred-and-fifty hours per person. So that's quite good. Like I said, Chief Sosby did retire and we did hire a new firefighter. He came to us from D Chicago. And we have one firefighter resigning and two more retiring in the next three months. So we'll be, we'll be doing some hiring of ourselves. Our dive team did come in possession of a dive truck that we got from another department. They refurbished it and did a whole bunch of work themselves. And then we got a, we got a grant and some help from the Port Authority and the Marina. And luckily, they, they just finished that up and we just put that on the road last week. So it looks really nice. And especially after the summer we just had, it was our busiest summer ever as far as the dive team goes. So they needed a, they needed a more efficient truck. So we went and got that for them. We also, thanks to Chief Candiano and his staff, we did get one of their, one of their older police cars and we had to re-outfitted it. We're in the process of that now. And that is going to be a new K nine car for our, for our fired dog Bosco. So he's going to have a new home. He's pretty happy about it. So again, I want to thank the police department for helping us. We, yesterday, the FEMA grants did start, the assistance for firefighters. So we're looking into that and we're going to be writing some grants for that. I will let you, I will let you know what we're writing exactly before we turn it in. So that way you're not blindsided. We also working with the U.S. Park Service and they've offered us one of their ATVs that we can use for trail responses and also beach responses. So other than that, that's about it for right now. We, like I said, we've been doing pretty good. We've, we've had a few cases of the COVID, but we've been very diligent about how we've been responding and how we protect ourselves in the station. It's a little hard with us working twenty-four hour shifts, but the guys are doing really good. And I really think they've worked hard. And again, like I said, we've had six-hundred more calls than we've ever had before last year in the middle of a pandemic. And they've really worked their tails off and I'm really proud of them. So with that being said, are there any questions?
Comment if I may, Chief. Congratulations on your new, new position. But as my wife and I have been traveling around the city and particularly the third district, we've noticed that it's been difficult to see some home addresses. They're not very visible. For whatever reason, they may be on a dark background, they may be covered up, or they may not even be there. And we were just thinking that it's important for, especially in terms of emergency response, that individuals have a clear indication of their home address. So if there is a response that is required, that they can clearly identify which home they need to be attending. So I'm just bringing that, not necessarily to you, Randy, but to the public's attention. That is very important that those dresses, addresses be visible.
I totally agree with us at the police department because when they, when it isn't clearly marked, that delays our response and every second counts. So we try to educate when we do go to a house that doesn't have it clearly marked. So we do let the people know just to, to try to help them out and let them know what they need to do.
Well, it's certainly for our county. I mean, we can't, we can't count them out, that's for sure.
Any other questions?
Great job, Randy. We're so proud of you guys. You do a great job. And I saw your new dive team truck today on Facebook. So if anybody gets an opportunity to go to the Portage Fire Department website or Facebook page, the new dive team truck sorely needed as the other one was kind of a disaster and not safe for our divers to be in. So congratulations on that.
Awesome job.
Like I said, our dive team did pretty much all the work themselves. So and then our mechanic Chuck Litzkow. So they did an awesome job and I'm real proud of them.
Good job. Are there any other questions for Chief Wilkening? Thank you, Chief.
Alright, you're welcome.
I know Barb Lusko is on here from the Marina. Do you have a report from the Marina, Barb?
Hi, good afternoon, everybody. Happy, Happy New Year. I really don't have much to say about the Marina. We're pretty much on shutdown. We're collecting money, though. We're collecting deposits. And so far, we've collected approximately some one-hundred-and-sixty, one-hundred-and-sixty flip holders, which is pretty good for this time of year. I'm, I'm, I'm very pleased with the way the money's coming in. We haven't had a cold, a hard freeze yet in the Marina and the babblers are working. So it's pretty much as business as usual, but there's just not a lot of activity going on around here. We have four or five fishermen go out a day. Sometimes nobody shows up. So I'm kind of lonely down here. If anybody wants to come and visit, I would appreciate it. But that's about all I've got.
Barb, do you have a little update on the kayak launch you're working on?
No, Mayor, I haven't heard from Matt Kaiser on that yet. I know he's working on it. But we're, I'll stay on top of that for you because I think that would be a great thing for our, our Marina here, a great addition. And I know that it would be very welcome to a lot of people that don't want to have to go with the launch ramp area. So I'll just stay on top of that for you and I will make sure to, to communicate with him maybe in the next week or so. I know he's been off. He's taken a couple of days here and there, using up some vacation time. But I'll stay on top of it.
Thank you. Does anybody else, does anybody else have questions for Barb? If not, I think Attorney Witten, would you like to update us?
Thanks, Mary. Not a whole lot. You know, January should be a pretty uneventful month. I just got arbitration, a grievance, our catalyst oral argument on the big foreclosure we have going. And on top of that, I'm starting bargaining on the, every single contract in the city except for the fire department. So January is something up to be a, a pretty eventful and packed month. So there'll be a lot happening. And I can kind of keep everybody in, in the loop as, as we work through all those things. And so it's, it's going to be a challenge, but the good news is I don't have any lawsuits new to report. So that's always encouraging. And I feel pretty good that we've gotten through almost this entire meeting without anybody's screen freezing. So that's also good news. So we want to start it on the right foot.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Attorney Witten? Are there any other department heads or city officials on the line? Okay, if not, we will move on to reports from standing committees.
Nothing new to report from the ordinance committee. From last year, we, we weren't meeting while we were meeting remotely. So nothing new to report from the ordinance committee.
Budget, do you have anything to report?
Just to keep everybody in the loop, the budget committee met when the seventeen-eighty-two notice came through. We met with Nina, we met with the mayor. And then this morning, myself, the mayor, Dan, Nina, met with the department heads that were affected by those changes so that everyone was kind of on the same page. We explained it, they asked questions. I mean, I hate to use the same verbiage. It is what it is. It's, it's very unfortunate. I think we worked really hard to do a good budget for all departments. But unfortunately, and I think, you know, unless Nina would disagree, you know, COVID didn't help. It, it didn't help our funds coming in and we're still going to be strapped for a while. It didn't help when we had some of the gifts that kept on giving and surprises that we didn't know were going to happen, you know? That, that all takes money. So we, we praise the department heads for doing everything they can to keep these budgets as tight as possible. And we hope it was less than it was the year before. So that's promising. And we hope that it, it continues to get, to get better.
I'll also add that we had to take into account after the fact, once we got seventeen-eighty-two notice, that we have a ten percent increase in our health premiums.
Nina, is that the largest increase we've had in our health premiums with the local one-fifty insurance that we have?
It seems like it. There, there's been a couple of years that it went up nine percent, but I, I haven't seen that it was ten. It's the maximum in, in different contracts, I know. I believe there's language in Dan Crew, correct me if I'm wrong, that if it exceeds, if it's ten, if it exceeds ten percent, I think it affects negotiating raises. I could be wrong.
Do you happen to know what our yearly total is for our insurance premiums, Nina?
We just paid out, just, well, we paid out December's on the tenth. I can prepare that report for you for next month.
Okay, please do. Okay, moving on. We have no unfinished business. So we will move on to new business, temporary loan extension resolution twenty-one oh one. Someone is, needs to unmute their mic.
Okay, resolution twenty-one dash zero one, a resolution authorizing the extension of temporary interfund loans. Date of April thirtieth, twenty-twenty to MVH from Edith, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. August thirty-first, twenty-twenty to MVH from Edith, five-hundred thousand dollars. Whereas during twenty-twenty, the following temporary interfund loans were necessary for the purpose of maintaining cash operating balances in the funds herein named. And whereas the transfers were to be repaid by the end of twenty-twenty, and whereas the city of Portage did not receive the full expected amount of its revenue in twenty-twenty, now therefore be it resolved by the common counsel of the city of Portage, Indiana as follows. Section one, the common counsel has determined that an emergency exists requiring the extension of the prescribed period or the repayment of the transfers. Section two, the common counsel has determined that the emergency exists because the city of Portage did not receive the full expected revenue for twenty-twenty. Section three, the transfers will be repaid no later than June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one. Section four, the clerk treasurer shall follow, shall forward a copy of the resolution to the state board of accounts and the department of local government finance passed and adopted by the common counsel of the city of Portage, Porter County, Indiana, this fifth day of January twenty-twenty-one. Motion to accept.
Did she make a motion to approve?
Yeah, I said accept, sorry.
Okay, do we have a second? We have a second?
Colin did.
Okay, Nina, could you please call the roll?
Sure. If I could just add real, real quick, in January of twenty-twenty, I just, I know we still have financial woes and whatnot to work through. No matter how hard you work, some things just take time. So I would just want to give a reminder of the amount of, of it, the extension. So anytime you take a temp loan, you're supposed to pay it back by the end of the budget year that you borrow. The council is allowed to, by, by resolution, extend it an additional six months. So that's what we're doing. But in twenty-twenty, in January, we had an extension of two-million-three-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-eight cents. This year, it's, you know, we, we whittled it down to one-million-one-hundred-thousand. So so it's still an improvement of one-million-two-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand-one-hundred-and-ten dollars and eighty-eight cents. So I wish we didn't have to extend it, but it's still-
We're chipping away at it.
Yes.
Rome wasn't built in a day.
That's right.
Good job, Nina.
Councilperson Alvarez?
Yes.
Councilperson Pedkorsky?
Yes.
Councilperson Geishurst?
Yes.
Councilperson Clem?
Yes.
Councilperson Williams? Councilperson Gully?
Yes.
Councilperson Zilly?
Yes.
We have the introduction of ordinances. I do not see any. We have petitions, remonstrances, and public input. Has anyone noticed if any public has signed in to comment?
It looks like there's one person on the line, but I don't think she is here to comment. I think she's just listening.
Okay. Are there any, pardon?
I just wanted to say that this version of Zoom, the webinar version, allows for like the Q and A to, to be done. So just wanted to mention that if people, if they don't have social media or, you know, want to comment that way or ask any questions, they could use that as a platform.
So how do they do that if they're not familiar with that, Nina?
So if they were to, you know, go to the URL that's on the agenda, that's posted on our website, they would just, they could click, well, they would have to type in the URL because it's not interactive PDF. But once they got to us, then at the bottom of the screen, you would just click on the Q and A and then you can ask, ask away, comment away. And then, and then as it gets answered, either out loud or if it's something that just is a simple response, it'll show that it's been answered or if it's still open and needs attention. It's kind of cool.
And I think there's, I just, I wanted to clarify one thing. I think there's a misconception amongst some folks about what requirement of the record or the minutes to include public input are. Some folks from the public asked me a couple of questions about that. Unless it's a statutorily required public hearing on something, their comments aren't required to be part of the record. Public input is really for the benefit of the public to address something to you guys. You know, to consider in something that you, you might be voting on or to bring some, you know, particular interest to your attention. So as, as the, as we're trying to work through this whole, you know, visceral world we're living in due to COVID, I, I would ask that the public understand that too. I mean, it's, it's a courtesy to have them come in front of you at a, at a meeting and be able to speak to the council. And so long as their comments get to you, I think the, the, the point has been achieved. So I just wanted to say that because I know there's been a couple of questions asked about why public input wasn't made part of the record or something. I don't know. But that's kind of the, the quick and easy hundred mile view of, of public.
Well, and it is my hope that with the vaccine coming out and after we get through the holiday gathering cases of COVID, that we are able to conduct live meetings. But the governor's order does allow us to continue to do that. And we will continue to do that to keep everyone safe. But hopefully we will keep you updated. So you need to watch our, our website to know if we are live or if we are having our next meeting on Zoom.
And I just want to say, I think it, switching over to Zoom is just much easier, much easier for people to join the meeting. So whoseever idea it was to switch over to Zoom, thank you.
So I do see that there was a question on the Q and A. Did you see that, Colin?
Yes, I do see one. It's Lolita Jones wants to thank Mayor Lynch for taking care of the trash in the vacant home in Squirrel Creek.
You are most welcome, Lolita. I was happy to do that. So at least we know that some people are now recognizing that they can go in on a Q and A. And so hopefully, like I said, this is a long term, but it does allow the public to communicate with us. Are there any other matters not already considered to come before the council? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Okay.
We have a motion in a second. Nina, would you please call the roll?
Person Alvarez?
Yes.
Councilperson Pedkorsky?
Yes.
Councilperson Geishurst?
Yes.
Councilperson Clem?
Yeah.
Councilperson Williams? Councilperson Gully?
Yes.
Councilperson Zilly?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone, and I hope it's a happy new year for all of us, and things are a little bit better for all of us.
Let's hope.
Absolutely.
Take care, everyone. Good night.
Night.